You've probably reflected in the minutes that he arrived after the roll call.
As, as it was.
Okay, at being the appointed hour, I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Valley, or the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, October 12th, 2023. There he is. Terrific. Sherri is the appointed voice of God again tonight, I guess. Sherri, could you call roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Ben- Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Terrific. If you'll all follow me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Lucas, any changes to the agenda recommended?
No changes.
Thank you. Okay. Public communications is the next thing on the list here. The time set aside to discuss items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. I see one person in the audience, do you intend to speak during public communications? Okay. Sherri, do we have anyone out there in the television land with hand raised?
No.
All right. Then we will move on from public communications to the consent items, the minutes of the regular meetings of September 20th and October 4th. Any suggestions on updates to those minutes?
No.
Nope.
I may, I'm, hold on, I may, hold on.
Okay.
No, I don't. I, yeah, I, go ahead. I, I do not have any notes on the minutes.
Okay.
I have other notes to the docket, but none.
Okay, very good. I had just one correction on item one, the minutes of the meeting of September 20th. This is on page three of four, the last paragraph before the vote. There should be a not in front of precedent setting. That was what I said, which is what other people said as well. That the decision was not precedent setting due to amendments to the code.
That's a good, good caller.
Read every word. All right, so a motion to approve these two as amended would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
You guys are fast.
Just trying to catch up myself. Okay, any discussion? All right, Sherri, would you call roll on items one as amended and two, please?
Quilisi.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Super. All right, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have two venues in play tonight, 706 Libby and 509 South Ventura. Commissioner Murphy?
I visited both sites. I had no ex parte contacts.
Uh, the same.
I visited both sites, but from the curb. I didn't actually walk into the sites and I had no ex parte.
I did the same. I, I caught a glimpse of the garage at 509 South Ventura, but didn't see anything up close and no ex parte contacts. All right, well, let's move on to item three, then our first public hearing item. Lucas, Maura?
I'll take that, thank you.
Very good.
Um, it's good to be back. It's been a while. Um, thank you, Chair Quilisi and Commissioners. This design review permit request is for the construction of a detached two-story accessory structure within the front yard area of a single-family residence within a residential zone. The accessory structure includes a garage and a second-story storage room, and it's located at 706 Libby. The subject site is approximately one-half of an acre and is developed with approximately 3,300 square foot two-story single-family residence and a 360 square foot detached, single-story garage, which is located currently in the front yard area behind the 20-foot front yard setback, however. Um, the lot coverage is approximately 11%, and the single-story garage is proposed to be demolished and replaced with a two-story accessory structure, including a first-floor garage and a second-story storage room. There's also a small storage room on the first floor that's accessible from the exterior of the building. And with this new structure, the lot coverage would be going from that approximate 11% to 12%. The site adjacent to the north, as well as others scattered throughout the eclectic neighborhood, includes some two-story, single-family residences and some two-story accessory structures. The Planning Commission is charged with review and determination of a design review permit for this proposed project pursuant to 10-2.2003 of the municipal code, as all applications for building permits that include a two-story structure are subject to review and determination by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's review is based on specific design principles, context, continuity, scale, and architecture. Continuity is that structures should be visibly compatible with the architecture of the existing and surrounding structures. Continuity that, in that the streetscape, or with the streetscape in regards to setbacks within the neighborhood. Scale with regards to height transitions between neighboring structures and architecture that piques interest as opposed to monotonous architectural lines. The proposed two-story structure is set back 20 feet from the front property line, as already stated, in the general area of the existing, uh, single stor- oh, it's in the same general area as the existing, single-story accessory structure that's proposed to be demolished. It's the northeast portion of the property. It's also set 17 feet north of the side property line, and the existing two-story residence is to the east and pretty much centered within the site. The setbacks in the lot coverage are proposed to meet the standards within the table in your staff report. The first floor of the accessory structure is, will be an uninterrupted 25-by-25-foot two-car garage, and the second story is 22 by 25 feet. And as I mentioned before, there's a little storage room, and it's under the staircase that's on the exterior of the building. The proposed elevations harmonize with the existing main residence in style and materials and color. And in your staff report, I mentioned a tree permit, but that's not part of what you're reviewing tonight. You're just reviewing the design review permit. The tree permit is mentioned in your staff report because the structure was initially proposed to be quite close to the existing oak tree and, or in, within the tree line. And staff suggested that they relocate it, and they did. And that was because of another recent, um, meeting here with the Planning Commission. And so going forth, you know, if we can avoid that kind of encroachment, we, we will try to do that. Not that we didn't before, but that was a real big one. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the project subject to the conditions in the draft resolution that you have in your packet. I do want to just mention that in the staff report on page two, under the section, "Site Layout", there's, there was an error and-
Staff report, page two?
Yeah, line five.
Oh, site layout, okay, yeah.
And under site layout, it says northeast where it should say northwest. It's in the staff report, not in the resolution, so it's, it's okay legally. It's just I wanted to note it for you. And also in the table that's on page six, the maximum density is incorrect. And I believe it says one unit where the maximum density on the site is actually two, two units. Not that two units are proposed, it's just that that's what the maximum density is within the, um, standards within the municipal code. With that, we might have and should have an applicant on, virtually, if you have any questions of the applicant.
Okay. Any questions for staff? No?
Um, I, I do have some questions. The, the elevations here have drawn in two Palladian windows. I'll use that term, you know, loosely, but round-top windows. Are there other Palladian windows in the main house? We're talking about context here and I, um-
I'd like to have that question answered by the architect or the-
Or the applicant.
The applicant, and they're both online. If there's other questions for staff, maybe we could do that first. It's up to you.
I do. You just mentioned the tree report, and that's not a, a part of our decision tonight. But you also said that at staff's suggestion, the applicant moved the structure so that it's not in the drip line of an oak tree?
It's barely in the drip line as opposed to quite a bit more in the drip line.
Okay.
It's, uh, much less significant. And the Arborist Report was revised along with that relocation of the structure.
So is, is the tree permit TR, T-23060, has staff approved that?
Yes.
Okay. Because my follow-up question was, if you didn't approve the tree report or the tree permit, then how can we approve the structure being where it is? Okay.
Understandable.
I have another question for the applicant.
On the same topic.
Yes.
It says here that the commission is charged with review and consideration of the tree permit. So while it's not for us to decide, it is for us to-
To consider at least, yeah. It, it, yeah, it seemed to me that approval of the tree report would have to be a precursor to approval of the DRP and whatever. Yes, ma'am?
It says here that the, um, the Planning Commission is charged with review and consideration of a tree permit when there's five protected trees to be cut down, and that's not the case here. So I'm letting you know in this paragraph when it is your, um, when you are being asked to approve one, a tree permit. In this case, you are not required to, and you're also not being asked to. I'm just giving you, uh-
Okay, but you have approved it?
Yes, we have.
Okay. That's, um- The phrase "storage room" says to me that there's going to be electric service there, but no plumbing in that room above the garage. Is that correct?
No bathroom or kitchen or anything has been proposed. It's, it's one empty room. And whether or not they go, they request a building permit for electrical or plumbing, I, I haven't seen, I have not seen that. And-
Okay, I'm just, I'm curious how we know that it's a storage room and not, not turning out to be a guest house or, or an ADU, depending on what sort of infrastructure is finally installed and, and how the city monitors that to ensure that storage room is storage room.
Well, when inspector goes out for this building permit, there, there will be, or there should be a, an empty room without any other- I can tell Lucas is just wants to jump right in there. Is that what you're doing? You're ready to put your finger? Okay. So, I, I do, I do want to say, I'm not sure if I'm going too far here, but, um, we would in, what we do now, these days, is actually encourage ADUs. It's not something that people have to hide. So if they were-
Agreed.
So if they were, if they wanted to put a second unit in there, that's not something that they, again, that they would have to hide.
No, but it would be a different permit.
Yes, it would be a different permit. Um, you would be seeing the second-story structure, but you wouldn't be, um, but the ADU would be ministerially reviewed. And if it were a guest house, uh, there would not be allow, they would have to have a bathroom, but not a kitchen.
There would be a CUP for that.
Exactly, which, which we have in the next project. Um, so those permits would be required.
Or they're not requested.
But that's not being requested, no.
Okay.
And if, excuse me, and if there was an interest by them to stub in electrical and, and, um, what else?
I presume there's going to be electricity on that second floor, but nothing else.
They would be having-
Sounds like.
Right, water.
Then they would request, hopefully, a, um, a building permit, or, you know, an electrical permit or a plumbing permit.
Modification to the building permit or something, yeah.
Yeah. In addition to that, I mean, from a co-compliance standpoint, we have co-compliance out there on the week, out, out in the city canvassing the area on the weekends as well. This community is very good about identifying when work is being done to verify and clarify that's being done with permits. That happens on a regular basis where we find that individuals every once in a while on the weekends tend to be doing work without the benefit of permits. And they come in and they, they typically talk to us. If they do not, then it's a co-compliance issue. So there's certainly measures in place to ensure that even after, um, work has been done, completed, and certificates of occupancy occupied, provided through building, any follow-up would be through the community. This community has been very good about, um, clarifying and verifying that things have been done per permit, so.
Okay.
The police force is certainly there.
And if, prior to any more questions, if you wouldn't mind if I go back to Commissioner Bennett's, uh, question about before we ask the architect, were you talking about the windows that are rounded?
Yeah.
Okay, so the main house, their front door and then also, um, other windows do have the same curve at the top.
Okay.
It's hard to see in the little photos.
Yeah, the site photos are-
I can see the doorway in sight photo D.
There are windows as well.
But there are windows as well.
Yeah.
Uh, quick question, maybe, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm just reading this wrong or just, it's kind of hard to tell, but, um, attachment C, page one of two.
Is your microphone on? Is your microphone on?
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
C, one of two?
Yeah, yeah. It looks like the, the proposed new garage is sitting on the same footprint. However, it's slightly, uh, built towards the, uh, street. I just wanted to make sure that I'm looking at that correct.
Actually, it is a little bit further from the street and a little further to the north property line.
To the north, okay.
So it's north-
It's moved northeast from the old-
Yeah, okay, that makes sense.
The dashed is the existing.
Okay, all right, cool. I just wanted to make sure I was right.
And it's bigger.
Yep. Yeah, and it's bigger, okay. All right. That was it. Thank you.
All right, that's, thank you, staff.
I have one other question.
One other question, great.
Um, and that is, the, these windows, and there are a lot of windows for, for a storage unit. Is there, are these operable windows? Can you open them and get a breeze in there if you have to go open?
I do not have a window schedule, so I'm going to, um, put that question-
We'll ask the applicant.
Have the applicant answer that question.
I mean, there are small pane windows, or relatively small pane windows in here. I'm just wondering whether they crank out or open up or anything else. I mean, and again, I, I, I hear you. We're in the business of encouraging people to add ADUs on their property and so to lower the threshold for some, something, five, a year down the road or five years down the road, an application to turn it into an ADU would be, would be welcome, but now's the time to prepare for that.
Yeah.
For, particularly from an infrastructure, getting water, sewage, and, and sewerage, I should say.
Add-on plumbing is mighty expensive.
Yeah. Yeah. But not when you got everything dug up and, uh-
No, if you do it now, that's fine, yeah, right. Okay, well then, let's hear from the applicant. Who do we have with us tonight?
This is Dennis.
Uh, good evening, sir. Please, uh, introduce yourself and tell us what you have.
Okay, hi, good evening. I'm Dennis Thompson. Um, I do have a camera here if I can turn on video, but I don't see the place to do that. So I will just talk you through this. This is a replacement of a small, it's a substandard garage. You can't really get two cars into it. It has a low-pitched roof, doesn't seem to fit the house. And, uh, Mr. Ingham is wanting to store a lifetime worth of, uh, legal documents. He's a retired lawyer and wants to get them out of storage and near his house. So ground floor is a good-sized garage, and the upper floor is proposed to be, um, an open space for storage of his documents. Um, the windows are there to make it look good on the outside, um, make it consistent with the house. The front of the house is, is got a number of, of arched windows. And I appreciate your suggestion about, um, pre-plumbing for a potential change of use. That, that wasn't in our discussions, but I think it's, it's a good consideration. And the intent of the, the design is, is pretty much to follow, uh, all the design details of the house. It's a steeper roof, um, the window details will be the same, the colors will be the same. I think it'll be a, a very consistent approach.
Okay, and so the, the plan for the upper floor at this point is then electricity, but no plumbing?
Correct.
Are you now rethinking the latter?
As I said, I think your idea of, of bringing rough plumbing to the building, but not in, there's no intention to install a bathroom up there at the moment. But, uh, bringing in a sewer line to the building, um-
And water lines.
I think that's a great idea. Pre-planning.
Uh, well, if, if we approve this resolution, then you need to still ask about the other stuff.
Right.
Yeah. Any questions for the applicant? No, no good. Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening. This is, uh, this is Sam Ingham, the applicant and property owner along with my wife. If I may, uh, I'd like to just amplify Dennis's comment a little bit, if that would be okay?
Sure.
Uh, I suspect that I might have some issues with my bride if we decided to turn the entire upstairs into dead storage for files. We actually, uh, have moved most of our files to the cloud. And so the storage upstairs is actually more likely to be, uh, dishes and things that are useful in a domestic level rather than in a professional level. So that's one, I don't know that that's important to you, but that's one comment. And the other comment is that I, I'm very, uh, your comments about the ADU are very educational to me, as has all the input we've gotten from staff as we go through. It's certainly, given the, the changing parameters of housing, I think having the possibility of changing to, uh, seek permitting for additional housing would, would be probably in the community's best interest. But that's absolutely not on our mind for, for right now. And Dennis can correct me, but I think the windows, as they're planned, were more for visual impact to make the structure more attractive to the neighborhood than they were with the idea that they would be functional opening windows. I don't think I've seen a window schedule either, but, uh, they were purely a design feature and not intended as a functional feature. And so with that, uh, if, if there are any questions at all that, that I can answer, I'm happy to do so.
Okay, any questions for the owner? All right, um, as, as previously said, if you decide to make some changes, work with staff on that, and, uh, there will be more decisions to be made if you do ask for, uh, an enhancement of the property to be either a guest house or an ADU. All right?
Absolutely. This whole process has been very interactive, and we've received, both in the tree permit area and relocating the structure and, and, and a lot of, it's not a very complex structure, but it has a number of nuances. And we've received a lot of very helpful input from staff. And I think we'll, uh, give some thought to how far we want to front-load the plumbing and, and sewage issues and, and, uh, consult with, with the architect and with staff to see where that leads us. Uh, and it's very possible we may decide to front-load some of that. But, uh, at this point, that's not on the, not on the plans.
Okay, um, a question for staff. If, if this were to be modified in the future to have an ADU on the second floor, it is big enough now? It's 600 and some square feet, something like that?
Um, the, well, I know the maximum is 85% of the existing residence, or 1,200 square feet, whichever is, is less.
Twenty-two by 25 is 550 square feet.
And I believe the minimum is 500, so I, I think.
Okay. So that wouldn't require any massive structural changes, just infrastructure changes?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And a ministerial permit through staff.
Absolutely. Uh, is there anyone here present who wishes to speak on 706 Libby? Sherri, is there anyone out there in television land that wishes to speak?
No, just those two that I had on.
Terrific, thank you very much. Then we will close the public comment portion of this hearing and come back to deliberations. Yeah, 550, right. So, um, any thoughts?
I have no objections or questions about what they're doing. It seems like a, um, a nice design for the neighborhood, and, uh, so I'm inclined to vote for it.
Uh, Jamie?
I like the house as it currently is and think that they've gone about a very sympathetic way to expand the utility of the house for their uses. And, uh, uh, they're following the pattern of the construction of the house to begin with. If it was not, um, I'd have an objection, but I have no objection.
John?
Yeah, I mean, considering the, the context, the continuity scale, architecture is what we're, what we're evaluating. I have no problems with it at all.
I feel the same. It's, it's an area that my wife and I walk through on a regular basis, at least once a week. It's a nice neighborhood. It's a nice house already. And I think it will only be enhanced with a matching, if you will, matching garage and storing, storage room. And, uh, it does seem like an ideal place for a potential new housing unit if the owner wants, wants to do that. So I like the project myself. With that, a motion for approval would be in order.
So moved?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Murphy?
Beat again.
Any discussion? No, all right. Sherri, would you, um, I had anything else on here? Oh, I had one, I had one question for, oh, we'll let it go. I, it's covered in the, it's covered in the conditions. Uh, Sherri, would you call roll on item three, please?
Quilisi.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Bennett.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you for coming in, uh, work with staff, and good luck on the project. I think it'll be a nice addition to the neighborhood. All right, let's move on to item four, a design review permit and a conditional use permit at 509 South Ventura.
Thank you again, Chairman and, or Chair Quilisi and Commissioners. This is a design review permit and conditional use permit request for a legal second unit to be converted to a guest house within a second story of an existing detached garage associated with an existing, single-family residence located at 509 South Ventura Street. That sounded complicated. The property is developed with a two-story, single-family residence and a detached, two-story garage. The garage includes an approximately seven, or excuse me, 800 square feet, um, first floor, which is currently a garage, used as for a garage, and an approximately 637 square foot second floor. The second floor, um, above the garage was constructed in 1991 as a game room, and records indicate that a permitted kitchen was added in 2005, which legally converted that space to a second dwelling unit. The current proposal is to convert that second dwelling unit to a guest house by removing the condition, or kitchen. Pursuant to the municipal code, a guest house is required review and determination of a conditional use permit and design review permit by the Planning Commission. Pursuant to section 10-2.904, which is, uh, section on replacement housing within the municipal code, the applicant is required to replace that existing second-story residential unit and is intending to do so by converting the existing garage to an accessory dwelling unit. Although the review and consideration- Although the review and consideration of the accessory dwelling unit is ministerial, the process is noted here due to the elimination of the existing second-story unit for the purposes of this or for the proposed guest house and the requirement within the code to replace that unit. So the conditions of approval that are in your resolution in attachment A include a specific condition that the applicant, quote, "shall submit for and receive all permits required, including a certificate of occupancy for conversion of the garage to an accessory dwelling unit within the first floor of the existing two-story garage prior to final approval of this conditional use permit and design review permit for the second-story guest house." Now, staff is recommending approval of the request as submitted. However, I do want to talk a little bit about the resolution. The resolution in your packet has been revised, and you have a new resolution before you. And there's also a new resolution out at the table by the door for any members of the public. The applicant is here. He's also the representative on his application. He also has a copy of the resolution. This revised resolution has some crossouts and some additions, and the additions are all of the required findings. There are three sets of required findings. There are required findings specifically for guest houses. There are required findings specifically for conditional use permits. And there are findings for design review permits. And so they're all spelled out here for you, and so your resolution is now 10 pages. It's a lot of findings, just... Thank you, justifications because of the conditional use permit for the guest house. And the guest house, again, has its own justifications beyond just that of a conditional use permit. So I want to open it up to questions.
Yes. If the garage is converted to an ADU, are there any parking requirements for this property that would then have two dwelling units?
There are not parking requirements... Or let's say it this way. An ADU is permitted to be from a conversion of the garage that's required for the single-family residence, and replacement housing, parking for that single-family residence is no longer required.
Okay.
Yeah, this is... I went back and forth with emails with Maura the last couple of days. And it turns out, in the last legislative session, AB 2221 was passed. It's one more change to the housing laws. And it says specifically that if you convert a garage to an ADU, the two covered parking spaces that were represented by that garage are no longer required.
That is correct.
Okay. That answers that question.
And something that the commission doesn't see on a regular basis are the ADUs that are being processed because they're ministerial. Right.
I do have a couple of other questions if no one else has questions for staff.
Hi, just a general question. Is this considered an ADU or this is a guest house?
No, this is a guest house. So a guest house does not have a kitchen.
Okay.
Cannot have a kitchen.
Currently an ADU, it's about to become a guest house, yeah.
In your description of the project, I think you said it was an attached building, not detached.
Oh.
Was that a...
I'd have to... It is a detached structure.
In attachment C, page one, it shows two buildings.
Correct. It is a detached accessory structure, two-story.
Okay. So there not... There will not be three structures on this property?
Correct. The existing accessory structure is proposed to have a guest house on the second floor, and there's currently a garage on the first floor. And the garage is tentatively proposed. We don't have yet... It has not been submitted yet, but to be an ADU.
Maura, the CUP relates to the guest house, right?
Yes.
And what specifically is being requested in the CUP?
What's being requested in the CUP is a guest house. And a guest house is then conditioned that the guest house is not for someone to reside in it full-time. It's... And it cannot have a kitchen.
Okay, so just the fact that it's a guest house is where the CUP comes in? I thought it might be an additional something.
Yeah, so from a conditional use permit standpoint, guest houses can still have a conditional use permit tied to them. ADUs cannot. Most cities in the early 2000s and leading up to maybe 2008, 2010 required conditional use permits for ADUs. With case law and, more importantly, state law that changed in between 2000 and 10 all the way up to even recent laws that we've seen unfold through housing law, those restrictions have lifted or gotten much looser in terms of what we can and can't do.
Okay.
So a question on that. If the owner was to sell the property and the new owners take, you know, purchase it, and they want to convert it back to an ADU, they don't need a conditional use permit to do that?
They don't need a conditional use permit for an ADU. However, if there's an ADU existing on the first floor, they can't have an ADU on the second floor because you can only have one ADU.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
And the CUP... I'm sorry. The junior ADU has to be within the walls of the main residence. So it... Yeah, so it could not be in this accessory structure.
And that does exist? There is a junior ADU?
No, there's not.
Okay, great.
If there were?
Now, they could propose one, but they're not at this time.
Additional questions?
And the CUP runs with the land. So if they sell the property, the CUP is still there for the guest house.
I'd feel a little more comfortable with it if this had some of the detail of the one we just passed in terms of drawings. The...
Oh.
The... You know, the one we just passed has elevations of the building, and so we...
Right. Well, all we're being asked to do tonight is decide on the conversion of an ADU to a guest house. So we have a floor plan.
But the structure is existing.
So they're not doing anything to the outside?
No, the structure's existing. There's no exterior.
Everything's on the same footprint. But it seems to me... Yeah, we have a floor plan. It's attachment C, page two.
Right.
That shows, I guess, the remnants of a kitchen.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Which is all that we're being asked to do right now. One of my questions... And then there's... This is proposed... Wait a minute. Existing floor plan, okay. And proposed... Oh, they're going to wall in part of the second floor. They're going to convert what is now kitchen into a large walk-in closet, it looks like. Or walk-in... Maybe it's a second bedroom or...
I thought it was a...
Maybe that's the bedroom.
I thought it was a bedroom.
Yeah. I did have a couple of questions. I recall from the second unit conversion program or the amnesty program or whatever we're calling it these days, that if you come in with an existing ADU, you have to meet the code of whenever you actually did that. But this one, this ADU conversion that comes about after this cutting down the ADU to a guest house, that will have to meet current code, right?
That's correct.
Okay. The AB 2221 that removes the requirement for the two covered parking spaces, if you take them over by making an ADU out of the garage, tells me that we now need to amend the code, specifically 10-21404, that requires two covered parking spaces for a residential property. And we're going to have to do something to say, except if you're doing this, then it's not required.
So that is a subject for another time because it's not for you to be reviewing at this moment?
Not for tonight.
Right. And the code... The ADU codes, the state codes are continuously changing and so...
Yes.
Just a general question. Because this is currently an ADU, it counts towards our affordable housing stock? So if we're removing this ADU, we remove the affordable housing unit?
No, well, yes, but there's a requirement in the code for replacement housing. And so that's where the ADU on the first floor comes in. And that's why there's a condition in here that the projects are kind of overlapping. You can't have one until you submit for the other.
You can't have the second floor legal till you finish the first floor.
Finish the first, okay. So that's why they're doing this? There's... I got you.
And the compliance with the conversion of an ADU to a guest house on the second floor is a matter of city inspectors, I guess, and code compliance?
City inspectors, yes. There wouldn't be... Yeah.
Okay. And on attachment A, the revised attachment A, page eight of 10, paragraph... Page eight, paragraph four, lines two and three, we're going to change less than 30 days to less than a calendar month.
Oh, yes. The applicant and property owner are prohibited from using any portion of the subject property for short-term transfer for less than one month.
One calendar month.
One calendar month. Thank you.
This is a sort of general question. I'm not sure to whom it is being pointed, but the window in the newly framed-in room is sort of very small vis-à-vis the size of the room and tucked back in a sort of cubby hole there due to the wall that's been created to put the closet in there.
Yep.
So... And there's no window in the bathroom. So not that... It's just...
Odments of the design.
Yeah.
If the applicant were wanting to make either of those things a change, is that more or less covered by what we might approve tonight?
That's not something that...
Becomes a minor change?
Yes, that's not something that would need to come back to the planning commission.
Okay.
And as far as what would be required in those two rooms would be through the plan check process or through the building permit process?
Okay. Any other questions for staff? All right. Do we have the applicant here? Oh, go ahead, John.
Sorry, so sorry. And maybe this is in here, but I'm trying to find it. Does it... Does the staff report, does the resolution, does it outline the new ADU that's going to be built?
No, there's the condition in there, very specific condition that I read, that has the two projects overlapping to make sure that one doesn't happen without the other. But it doesn't discuss the ADU because the ADU isn't... That's processed ministerially.
And we're not evaluating that.
You are not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Nor has it been submitted yet, but when it is submitted, you're not evaluating it. Staff will be.
Right. I just didn't see it in here, but you said it is in here.
It's not in there.
Oh, it's not in here?
It's not in there. Because it's...
It's specifically not in there.
Well, there's a condition in there that says that the two projects, you know, one can't happen without the other.
Right.
But you're not reviewing the other.
Right, no, I get that. I just didn't know... I just didn't see the condition.
Okay. That condition is... I can tell you it is... Let's see.
Is it community development?
I'm wondering if it got lost in the red line.
Yeah, attachment A, page eight of 10. Applicants receive all permits requiring...
It is condition number two.
Okay.
On page eight of 10.
Yeah. For conversion of the garage, it says.
And we had no... We had no community feedback on either this project or the one we just...
Not a phone call or an email, nothing.
Okay. Good.
I can testify, Libby is a pretty quiet neighborhood. Yeah. Okay.
Actually, there's a lot of traffic around.
Up and down the street, yes. Yeah, you have to watch out if you're walking that street, which I do. Okay. End of questions for staff. And we hear from the applicant. Do we have the owner or architect or someone? Please come forward, introduce yourself, and talk to us about the project.
Hi, my name's Damian Redman, and I'm one of the owners, the co-owner. My wife and I and her parents bought the property together, and we're trying to make a little bit more space in the second dwelling because her parents are in the primary dwelling and we'll be living in the other dwelling, so... Sorry. So, yeah. Mara did a great job of walking through the... It's a really... Sort of, it's been a complex process, but they've been really, really great at helping us through it. But, yeah, so I don't think I have anything else to add unless you have any questions.
No, you understand that you have to finish both halves of the second building before you can legally occupy either half?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. We're Airbnb... We're doing some Airbnbs for a little while while we get this done, so... Yeah, we're...
Hopefully not in the city.
Yeah.
Not in the city, of course not. Of course not. Okay? Any questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Sherry, is there anyone out there in television land that wishes to speak?
No.
Very good. Then we are going to close this portion of the public hearing and come back to the commission for deliberation. Any overall thoughts?
No, pretty straightforward. You know, I like that Maura outlined that condition for me, so I appreciate that. Thank you. But no, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay, well, I learned about AB 2221 this week.
There you go.
Because I was asking, what happened to the parking required for the primary residence? And Maura said, "Look there." There it was.
No, I agree.
I think this is very straightforward. We learned a little bit about CUPs needed for the guest house. That's all good.
Yep.
So I'm inclined to approve this.
All right. I feel the same. It's a good-looking project. What you can see of it from the street, there's not much.
I know.
But it has been demonstrated to me that it's all within the law, and as long as it all gets done, I'm in favor as well. A motion would be appropriate here.
Oh, I'll make a motion to approve this.
I second it.
And Murphy seconds it. Any discussion? Sherry, would you call roll on item four, please?
Quilcie?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Terrific. Work with staff. You have your approval, sir. Let's go on to item five, city council adopted housing element programs.
Yay! Are we ready to talk about this? Okay, so I think it was two... Yes, thank you, Mara. I think it was two meetings ago because I think last meeting we had a wonderful educational piece on housing laws, right?
Great, yeah.
Yes, letting it all soak in as we kind of lean into some of these projects coming before this body. That's for another meeting. What we're talking about here tonight is the housing element. And more importantly, the adopted housing element and the programs that are within this housing element. A couple of meetings ago, we kind of let it air out. Everybody got to kind of take a look at it. And I had the wonderful opportunity to meet with the housing subcommittee with this body, which is Vice Chair Trent and Commissioner Murphy. When we met, we spoke about the... And focusing on the ongoing programs. And those programs are the programs that either were monitoring on a quarterly or half-quarterly basis or an annual basis, or they're things that we've got to continue to add stuff to or add information to throughout the calendar year. Those have been outlined within the packet that you're seeing here tonight. And we had the wonderful opportunity this week to go through each of these. And we had the wonderful opportunity this week to go through each of these items. I'd like to go through them, I think there's maybe six or seven in total, one by one. I think that's the whole point here. This is kind of a nice foundational piece because some of these other ones have a little bit more teeth to them and a little bit more depth. But I think this is kind of a good, kind of, start to the process in terms of how we're going to be addressing these into the future. So, with that being said, if we start with program one, it speaks to ongoing as an action order. And that action order talks about adequate sites for RENA and monitoring of no net loss as a program. In there, it has objectives and timeline. And I'll just read these, it talks about develop a procedure to monitor the SPL overlay sites. Additionally, it has comprehensive evaluation of the SPL development standards, provide information on available sites and development incentives to interested parties. And this is all to be done by the end of this year. So really what that boils down to is when someone calls and they ask questions, we provide the information freely. And that's something that, that front counter staff provides on a regular basis when those questions come up. But I will say, anytime front counter staff gets questions on those, those usually come through me so that I'm aware of any potential applicants that are looking at potentially developing those sites.
Lucas, could you give us some examples of the development incentives that might be offered here?
So, in terms of development incentives, those could be reductions in fee costs. Those obviously would go to city council, we don't have that in our fee schedule currently, but those are certainly incentives that could be offered into the future.
Okay.
And that's typically what, what would get offered in developments like that, of that nature.
Or density bonus or waivers of certain things, certain development standards?
Incentives within density bonus or concessions. It does, it does say only incentives in this case. So we're only looking at what our code would allow for. If you expand it slightly into the density bonus law, which is, feels endless at this point, yeah, there's a lot more to unpack there. There's a lot of different incentives, depending on the affordability levels, ranging from 10 to 100%.
And on number three, you mentioned that staff will provide information when they call in and ask. And I believe in our conversation, you had mentioned that you were also going to look at potentially putting those, a list of proposed units on the website?
Yes, actually, thank you, there's a reason why there's more than just me thinking about these things. Currently on our website, we actually do have affordable housing projects that are in for review. And that is on our website currently, and it's, it's available for anybody that's interested in seeing the progress of each of these applications as it relates to whether they're within an SPL overlay or it's just a standard affordable housing project.
So it could be like a.
Actually, take away the word standard, it's not a standard, there's no standard affordable, it's a affordable housing project.
Right, right, and that, and that, will count as well if it's just a percentage affordable and the rest are like market.
Market rate.
Yeah, yeah, because it technically will apply, okay, cool.
Right, and obviously, what we're trying to do here is to reduce our RENA number to effectively zero. Our RENA number's 53, within the next eight years or, right now, I think we're looking at the next five to six years. It's an achievable number.
Oh, also, a point of clarity, and this was something that Judy brought up. The RENA numbers, to meet the RENA numbers, they're, the units have to be built.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, there are three different categories. Now, there's three different categories, let me explain it, I was explaining it to Vice Chair Trent and to Murphy. So in our annual progress report, our APR, we have, it used to be, I don't want to talk about it used to be, what we have currently, because it's just too much to talk about, and too much to unpack, because there's other layers to that. What we have is we have, we have a monitoring piece for projects that are submitted. We have a monitoring piece for projects that have been approved. And then we have a monitoring piece for projects that have been built, meaning they've received a certificate of occupancy and are now being used, right? It used to be, sorry, I have to say this, it used to be that when projects were approved, we got credit for them. End of story. However, 2019 into 2020, I believe that changed. And when that changed, it flipped to this three-headed monster where now they're tracking all three progress components to see if a project that has been, has been applied for, ended up receiving approvals and then ended up getting built. If their project was applied for and then was approved but then never built, they go back to the drawing board of why was it approved but then never built? So they'll either reach out to the developer or they'll reach out to the city sometimes, or the agency, whatever that happens to be. That's, that's like the simplest way to, to describe what you're, because I know you're, you're remembering something probably older, but just recognize that the new regulations talk about you're getting credit when those are built. All three phases are included as a part of our APR, but really, you're getting credit once they're built.
What I think of as a fourth category then, that is property with the potential of being developed, most of what's on the SPL list, for example, that is no longer considered as a part of RENA? Only what's been built is part of RENA?
Yeah, you're, what you, I understand what your question is, you're, and your point too. What you're talking about is what we were required to provide as a part of the housing element. So the housing element requires us to provide so many units beyond the 53. We could provide 53 exactly, but if one of those sites does not end up getting built as affordable housing, as an overlay, but begins up getting built per its base zoning, let's say it happens to be C1, and it ends up being only commercial, which they can do, some sort of use that doesn't have any residential, then we lose out on those units and suddenly we're deficient. And HCD has a whole process in place where we have to then find other sites within a certain time period or else our housing element becomes non-compliant.
I remember now several times at our last meeting being told, you're talking about housing element law, not housing law.
Yeah, so it's everything up to the housing element, right? So there's all these pieces that this body reviewed in 2021 at several meetings. That's all set in place. Now we're looking at how we get those either approved or built. At least, we've already identified areas in which those, those units sit. Beyond, actually, I think we have almost double what the unit size is, for good reason. You should never know, right? Okay, so, that's the first one. Any other questions? Okay, so the second one is complete the general plan update by 2023. So here's the situation. I'm working on an item right now that's going to be going back to city council. That's going to be laying out the financials and the process to foresee this general plan moving forward for a decision. Obviously, it's going to be coming before this body and obviously city council as well, right? And the community as well. I mean, obviously, the community's been a part of this for the last four years. Certainly, in however many more years it takes, which I'm anticipating another 18 months to two years to see it to the end, to the finish line. So, that'll be certainly outlined. 2023 is not a realistic number, but we put it in there thinking that there was some fast-track options. Reality is, is that when I do the update, I'll identify it's ongoing. And when I say update, when I do the APR, the annual progress report, it's just not the numbers or the units that are being built. It also requires me to provide updates or staff to provide updates to each of the 19 programs in terms of their progress or the status.
When's, when's the next APR?
So it requires us to, staff to have, the city to have something started and sent to HCD by April 1st of each year. So once the calendar ends, December 31st.
First quarter of each calendar year, yeah.
Yeah, then we, then we take all that data, which we've already been doing throughout the year, so it's not like we're starting from scratch. We already have all that data, it's just inputting it into the Excel sheets which they provide and then making sure that we're covering all the bases. The nice thing, the only, the one nice thing that I've noticed about HCD is they've provided a, a much simpler way in which to take that, the quantitative data and plug it into their Excel sheets. The bad thing about the Excel sheet is if you want to modify it, it's not modifiable, right? So they, they hold the cards from that standpoint. So if we want to go in and be like, hey, it's this, but it's actually this, they're like, no, 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 it's just this. And it's like, there's a caveat, though, doesn't matter. They're all about the numbers from that standpoint. And then obviously, any of the updates to our programs, they're curious about. And they want full, full detail. Okay, so that is to the, the general plan update. That is in process and I anticipate they're going to council in the coming months. Ongoing program three, which talks about affordable housing covenants. So it's general, okay, so during the 2021 to 2029, which is a six-cycle housing element planning period, no affordable housing is considered at risk, but will continue to monitor into the future. And that is a true statement. Within this phase or within this six-cycle, there are no units that are within. So the covenant would be a 45 or a 50-year covenant on a specific site and whether or not within the next eight years, that's looking to expire. There are no, there are no sites in the city that, that have that at, at present. Now, into the future, there could be, and then we've got, we've got to take a look at that. And we'll certainly have to update that program leaning into the seventh cycle, if that's the case.
I have a question. I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
Oh, I was just going to say, a point of clarity on that too. No affordable housing is state-defined affordable housing?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
And it has to have the covenant tied to it. So if it's somebody that happens to be renting a piece of property or a unit that is below market rate.
Right.
That's not a protected deed restricted, doesn't have a covenant? Yeah, doesn't count.
And, and if that were, if that were removed, then it's not subject to the no net loss provision, or is it? If it is, if it is a non-deed restricted piece of property that rents below market.
Yeah.
And it is taken down or otherwise taken out of service, I don't know, does that fall under the, the code's no net loss provisions?
If it's, if it's.
Deed restricted affordable housing?
We had that tonight.
What, the, well, the case that we just saw, here's, here's a family living in an ADU. Have no idea what kind of rent they're paying, is it market rate or below market rate? It's family, so it's, it may well be under market rate. But I bet the city doesn't know. And so if they take that ADU out of service, that's the question. It was posited in the staff report that that housing unit has to be replaced.
That's true.
What kind of housing unit has to be replaced?
Well, I think by law, ADUs are considered affordable housing by state standards.
They are.
Affordable by law.
Yes, by law.
That's why we're able to count them, before we were not. And before would be pre-2018.
They're affordable but not deed restricted, not necessarily deed restricted affordable.
Yeah, the deed restriction was actually lifted in 2019. And I remember that coming before this body, that was the very first code amendment that I brought forward to this body and had to explain the deed restriction lifting and what that meant. And it was a process that's taken us the better part of three years to unravel because council at that time said, not only is it ones moving forward, but we also want to remove the deed restrictions for all passed.
Which is actually an expansion of the state's control.
Yeah.
Because you, you don't have to just replace deed restricted affordable housing. The affordability comes from the rent, not from the deed restriction.
Yeah, so in terms of.
If we don't know what the rent is.
Yeah, if we're not, if we're not aware of what the rent is or it hasn't been deed restricted or has some sort of covenant on the property or on that specific unit.
Or if it's an ADU, then it's affordable by, by law now.
The example that you saw earlier was an ADU. So that's got to be replaced. I don't know the, the language exactly, but it's basically a like-for-like.
Is a covenant the same thing as a deed restriction or?
Yeah, they're interchangeable terms. The deed restriction itself is a covenant over the property.
Okay.
Yeah. And typically, the deed restriction then gives specific direction and parameters in which to, to apply.
Okay.
Now, if you are entering into a covenant with a developer, can the developer benefit from a tax standpoint? Meaning, if you were to do a covenant on a historic facade and say, we will not change, we'll have a covenant that will not change the facade, even if the facade has already been landmarked, you can get a covenant on that if it restricts the ability to get the highest income from the property?
In terms of whether or not there's some sort of local financial incentive, I'm not aware of one, aside from maybe a Mills Act that you could potentially move forward with. There are state grants out there. However, the parameters in which those exist are all over the board. Some talk about only state or federally designated or protected historic sites. There could be some out there that talk about local. I'm just not aware of any.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, if you, out of the goodness of your heart, give.
You mean out of the city's goodness of its heart?
No, the, the property owner's goodness of his or her heart. Say, I'm willing to reduce the highest and best use and the, the income that I generate from highest and best use. And I, I will sign a covenant that it will be affordable housing and that will be the only use for it. And I don't have to do that, but if I do it, there's no tax benefit to the developer who's doing that or the property owner who's doing that. That's a question, I'm sorry.
That's personal charity.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that question. Because it sounds to me like it is, it's not something that's per the code. It sounds to me like it's something that's beyond what the parameters of code would speak to. Are they required to do that? No. Could they do it out of the goodness of their heart? That's a personal question.
And if they do, can they get a tax deduction, so it's not out of the goodness of their heart?
Yeah, the only way that I can see a, a property tax deduction would be through a Mills Act. But there's a, there's an asterisk that's attached to that, which is the preservation of that site into the future. So they've got to continually show that they are making improvements or modifications to the property to ensure the longevity of that asset.
I doubt that there's any property tax relief there. If you had, even if it was an ADU or if it was a second residential unit of some sort or a single-family residence that you own and you're renting, if you choose to reduce the rent, that doesn't change the assessed value of the property. It only changes your income from the property. I think.
Yeah, I, I, this is a, this is a different subject and a, a longer one. But, and I've seen it used on the issue of conservation issues, conservation meaning preservation of historic buildings. Where if you were willing to do a covenant with a, a nonprofit that was seen as being neutral by the government, meaning it would, and, and that the covenant would be managed by that entity. Here, I'm thinking of, actually, the Los Angeles Conservancy is one such agency that you would be effectively downzoning, it's not, it's not in the zoning, but you're, you are reducing the capacity of the building to be transacted at, at the rate it would be if it was, if it could be modified substantially, which it cannot if you're signing a conservation easement. And it was suggested, for instance, that the theater could sign a covenant with a, this is back four or five years ago, could sign a covenant which would restrict the development rights of that building. It can only be, it would have to maintain its facade and it can only be a single-story building, so on and so forth. And that, given that to. And that, given that to, giving that covenant to an assessor who says, oh, well, that building would have been worth two million dollars because of the development capacity on that site, but it's now only worth one million dollars, and that there was a tax.
That would be a tax saving.
There would be a tax savings associated with that.
That's between you and the county assessor.
Yeah. Between you and the county assessor, that's correct. And the IRS, um, obviously.
Sure.
So for the purposes of this conversation moving forward, let's try to stay away from giving specific examples. And speak more in general terms. Okay. But I do appreciate the dialogue, just to be fair. Okay, so moving on to.
Number eight.
Number eight, so we're skipping ahead, cause some of these are not ongoing, but actually have some specific, uh, items that we'll talk about in the future, ones, twos, and threes, right? So the purposes of today, remember, we're talking about only ongoing, kind of setting the foundation for, uh, future conversations. So program eight says, Ojai Municipal Code, Code Capacity Preservation. So one speaks to the study and analyze the effects of a potential capacity preservation requirement as part of the general plan, Ojai Municipal Code update in two thousand twenty-three.
Capacity for what?
I think it's.
Units?
Yeah, it's the number of units, so, um, yeah, we can't do that right now. There was a sunset clause for two thousand twenty-five for our growth management, um, plan, and that's been extended to two thousand thirty. So we can continue monitoring this number, and that number continues to grow. I think at last, it was like one hundred ninety-six, uh, dwelling units. Is everybody can, is everybody familiar with what the growth management plan is and what it does?
Vaguely, I know that it's not applicable right now.
It is not, it is not, there was a, uh, well, I want to say it was one of the SB's eight, nine, or ten, I can't remember which one, probably ten. This is not the one that I'm horribly familiar with. So in that, it basically, uh, the, our growth management plan, on an annual basis, on June first of each year, we provide an update. And that update then provides, um, not only the community, but council with the running number. There's a equation that's built into our code that identifies the number of units that our community continues to build. That can be single-family, that can be, um, ADUs are exempt, they exempted that out a couple of years ago. Uh, and any sort of multifamily, either for rent or for sale.
So this capacity is the number of residential units not counting ADUs?
Correct, that could be built within a calendar year.
That's the limit.
And that was the limit, so it's a growth management plan. I learned about this, the, the funny thing about this, just if I go into the wayback train when I was in grad school. I learned about this through Ojai. Ojai, Petaluma, and there was, there was a city in Florida, uh, I can't remember the name of it, um, off the top of my head. All three of those communities, we actually studied, Ojai was one of them, um, in terms of a growth management plan. In terms of figuring out fringes in which communities grow, uh, in a respectful manner. On average, this city is somewhere in the neighborhood of fourteen to sixteen, sometimes seventeen units. Depending on population and a couple of other, other factors, uh, housing size, per year. Uh, there's an equation that I plug in, um, given some information from the state, and then obviously our population.
Are ADUs considered in that?
No, it's not. They were exempted out a few years ago.
Okay, cause that's like a hundred.
But if somebody came in with a proposal to build, say, fifty residential units in a single building.
Yep.
That breaks the growth management plan.
For that year. However, however, city council in, I want to say, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, adopted revisions to this growth management plan that allowed for that number to recirculate. Meaning, um, if they're not all used within a calendar year, that number then skips forward to the next year. So let's say there's five units that get built, but you were allocated sixteen, the city was allocating sixteen. So there's a, there's a running balance of, um, eleven that get, that gets kicked into the next year. So you have eleven plus for the next year, whatever that, whatever that new number is. So it's another sixteen or seventeen, see how that just continues.
For the past five, six, seven years, we've been rolling much of this available capacity.
Yeah, once that started, yeah, once that started, which I want to say was probably six years ago, that number has grown. So you, so a sizable project that comes in, that's say, for instance, fifty or sixty or a hundred units, we would have the capacity, if we, if it wasn't put on, um, hold until two thousand thirty, we would have the capacity in which to allow for that development to come forward, just by the growth management ordinance itself. Obviously, there's other parameters that come into play, but we're only talking about that piece.
And, and we can't use that, though, right now, cause we can't use the growth management.
Cannot, cannot use it to deny or, or, or inflict decision.
So we have no limit?
No teeth.
It has no teeth right now, but we continue to monitor it because by two thousand thirty, who knows?
So potentially, somebody could come in and say, hey, I want to do five hundred units, and it wouldn't matter. Wouldn't be part of our growth management plan.
Correct. We couldn't use that, that, man, obviously, there's other aspects that come along with a project of that size. But growth management. Obviously, monitoring it and, and identifying, cause that would then deplete the number that we currently have in there, and we'd be in the negative. Still monitoring, but it couldn't be a determining factor.
Okay, cool.
The state's done an excellent job of cutting a lot of the
Yes, they have.
pieces and tools that we, planning tools used to have. Any other questions on this one?
No. Whenever we're talking about numbers like this, where we're talking about growth in available inventory of resident, residential spaces, if you will, that is net demolition, I assume.
Yeah, so if there's a unit on site, and you demo that unit and you build fifty, it's forty-nine, right?
It's net growth.
What if, what if there's, where, whether you buy another property and demo it at the same time you're building the others?
Unpack that for me.
Uh, let's say you own a, a, a large parcel, and it's got a rundown shack on the, on the large parcel, and you decide you just want to bulldoze it.
If it's a single-family residential unit.
Yeah.
By our code, you're allowed to do that.
Yes.
Yes.
You're allowed to do that.
And you wouldn't, and you would, cause that thing gets into, and we were talking about something earlier, capacity and, I think it was something about unit, unit preservation. You can demo a single-family residence, and by our code, by the standards of our code, don't have to rebuild that single-family residence.
So that doesn't, that doesn't violate the no net loss.
Correct. However, an ADU is not covered under that, that's why, correct.
Affordable, affordable is the net loss. So if it's not affordable, if it's just a single-family home, you could, you could demo it, not replace it.
Why someone would do that, I'm not sure, but.
Kind of weird, but you never.
Unless it's a single-family rental, and then it depends on what it's renting for.
Yeah, if it qualifies as affordable.
It might be affordable.
State-defined affordable.
Yeah, state-defined affordable, then you do have to replace it.
Yeah, from a capacity standpoint, um, like, for instance, SB nine is the complete opposite of what we're talking about, right? It's talking about how to put more units on one particular piece of property, right, to four.
That's lot split in ADUs, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so.
Sixteen.
I love that everybody has done their homework. When I said SB nine, everybody already knew what I was talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so program thirteen, Ojai Municipal Code, Growth Management Ordinance.
Look at that, we read ahead.
So I already, resume implementation of the GMO upon sunset of SB eight, oh, it's SB eight prohibition. So, okay, continue to monitor the city's GMO pool and enhance adequate allocation available to the city's arena. So it's, it's kind of interesting how sometimes these programs kind of do similar things in terms of overlapping. This one's pretty specifically identified, and I'll admit, it's two thousand thirty, so we will continue to monitor. And it's ongoing. Um, we have four more left here, is there, is last page, no, it's just these last four. So, maintain, okay, so program sixteen, maintain and enhance the quality of existing housing and residential neighborhoods in Ojai. This program talks about continuing the city's housing rehabilitation, rehabilitation program, but target assistance to address code enforcement issues with the goal of rehabbing sixteen units over the planning period. So. One example of that would be the compliance program. Anytime that you're rehabbing those units, or those units that aren't currently online, bringing those online and making sure that they are meeting public health and safety requirements, that would be one of them. That's how we would get one unit. And on average, we're probably doing in between eight and ten compliance units a year. That'll be, and obviously, through the APR, Annual Progress Report, we get to count those, which is kind of nice. Uh, there was another thing I was gonna say about this.
Lucas, what does, um, in the funding aspect, what does CB, CDBG stand for?
Oh, the Community Development Block Grant?
Block Grant, thank you.
Yeah, so the federal government, if I recall correctly, right? Yeah, I think it's the federal government, I'll, I'm almost for certain it is, because I've used it in other cities. So the, the feds, depending on your population, provides each city with a, a certain number that they can use for public purpose. Uh, typically, that ends up being used for, well, it can be used for a number of things. And I've seen some creativity done in other cities that I've been a part of in terms of creating policies. But the number's got to be over a hundred thousand. I think our number is like, less than twenty, it's not very big. So it doesn't give us a whole lot of room to do a whole lot, and that number runs out pretty quick. Especially if you're doing just one project that's, that happens to be addressed or earmarked for public works purposes, yes?
Various ways of spelling.
Oh, it's HCD, so it's state, but then state.
Pretty much.
It's probably, is it given from the feds, though? HCD distributes and determines guidelines, okay. So it's a filter-down approach, feds to HCD, and then HCD then disperses it based on population.
Got it, and I know we talked about this before, but, um, these are all, these usually come from code enforcement issues.
Some do.
Some do, okay.
So code enforcement doesn't go after co, uh, compliance programs. It's amnesty, right? So the idea is, is that they come forward willingly, and then by doing that, we provide them with a smooth, straightforward process. Co-compliance is a completely different beast. Those are the ones that we typically go out, we know from complaints and from, yeah, from neighbors' complaints, and just doing our own research that there is, there's an issue, it needs to be corrected, in order for that unit to be safe, livable. Unfortunately, this community is, is not immune to that, and has had those happen in the, in the past. And probably will have them happen in the future. That's all I can say about that.
I live right near a bunch of them.
Yeah, co-compliance, I'm not necessarily allowed to say all the, the funny, squishy little details on it.
All good.
But under, under the compliance program, people did have to establish when the housing unit was actually made such, whether by conversion or new build, and meet the code at that time.
Yeah, they don't get to come in and say, oh, it's been here since nineteen seventy-two, where's the proof?
Prove it, yeah.
Yep, and there's a bunch of different ways in which we work with them to, to get that established.
And then they have to meet nineteen seventy-two code.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Okay, so which one was I on here, sixteen?
Next one.
Seventeen, no.
Okay, now we're on to seventeen, anti-displacement, continue implementation of the city's anti-displacement provisions. Okay, so that's, that is section ten dash two nine oh four, it's the replacement housing, um, provision that we were talking about, so anti-displacement. Uh, if I recall correctly, the city council just recently adopted, um, an ordinance that talks about rent stabilization, so that gets to the heart of the matter.
In the same area.
Yeah, that's definitely within the same, um, ballpark, for sure. And just so everybody's aware, we are getting lots of, of calls and inquiries about it, and meeting with, um, property owners and tenants, asking the questions and walking them through the process, so. It's definitely, it's not something where it's been adopted and nobody is following up or even curious about it. From a co-compliance standpoint, we haven't had any, any issues at this point, so. Which is encouraging. Okay, so, pro, go ahead.
I was just looking at that replacement housing section, and it does say, uh, the conversion or demolition of existing residential dwelling units inhabited by persons and families of very low, lower or moderate income, so it doesn't have to be, I think, from the code, deed restricted at the time it's demolished. That's how, that's how I read it, just an update on that.
My reading is it only depends on the rent and the income.
Well, it sounds like income.
That's, that's what it sounds like.
So it does, this is a deed restriction, has nothing to do with the replacement requirement anymore.
That, that's what it looks like.
Can you read it again?
So it says, um, except as provided below, which is the single-family, um, et cetera, public nuisance. Uh, the conversion or demolition of existing residential units inhabited by persons and families of very low, lower, or moderate income shall not be authorized unless provisions have been made for replacement.
Now, is, is this, is the city?
With the exception of a single-family, so if it's a single-family unit.
Except for a single-family, um, demolition for public nuisance, and demolition for non-conforming use.
Does, does the city have written confirmation of the income of each family that lives in each housing unit?
No.
How else would you? How else would you monitor and manage that housing performance with this piece of the code?
Excellent question, and I've already been, I've already been faced with that, that very trying dilemma. You ask, you ask for the information, and then you verify the information, so it's, it's asking for the information. In some cases, it's provided, in other cases, you've got to go out and find other ways in which to, to obtain the information.
And that section does require the developer to bear the burden of proving that.
Yeah.
It's not the case.
If something is being developed, if it's existing.
We're talking about existing, this provision is talking about existing, correct?
Yes, yeah, existing.
And is it, does it have to be state qual, or state-defined low?
Not, it doesn't.
I mean, low income?
The code doesn't specify that, yeah.
Yeah, but it's, there was three different categories, it said something about low, very, what was the?
It says very low, lower, or moderate income.
Those are all state.
Yeah, those are all state.
But it doesn't say that they're state numbers.
That needs to be reworded, because low is part of lower.
Yeah, if they're not, if it's, if that's not state-defined, what does it mean?
Let me see if the definition section has that.
State-defined in terms of the area median income.
Sure, but if it calls it out, then that's one thing, but it sounds like it's just not calling it out.
It, it looks like in the definition section does define not per state, it doesn't tie it directly to the state definition, but it has, you know, extremely low, it's thirty percent of area median income.
AMI, AMI is part of the state law.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the area median.
So that's good, okay, so at least there's that.
And we're using acronyms to just make sure we spell them out as well. To anybody who's watching at home.
Area median income, which is the median income in the county, county-wide, yeah.
Okay. No, thank you for that clarification, because I was saying something, thinking it was law, but you, you corrected the record. And that's, as an attorney, that's what you're supposed to do.
And, uh, you know, the, the article is, is pretty long, there's like twelve sections within it, so maybe there's some further clarification in another section about what that means, so.
Perfect. Program eighteen, sustainability. Continue to collect, maintain, and disseminate information from the Southern California Edison to encourage existing residents to potential, to participate in energy efficiency, efficiency retrofit and rebate programs. That's stuff we could put on the website, and Southern California Edison has all kinds of, um, pieces of information and, and.
And they're endlessly sending mailers out.
Yeah, I mean, they, they've got our addresses, so it makes sense. Okay, that's eighteen, nineteen is affirmatively, affirmatively furthering fair housing and assure equal access to sound, affordable housing for all persons regardless of race, creed, age, or sex. It's program nineteen, which talks about fair housing. Okay, so there's one, two, three, it looks like three points here. Housing mobility, promote the use of Section Eight assistance in the city, specifically assist the HRC in promoting new state laws, which is SB three twenty-nine, SB twenty-two, two twenty-two, that recognizes public assistance as a legitimate source of income for housing payments. Obtain outreach and education materials from the HCR, um, and begin distribution of information on the city's web. on the city's website and public counters in twenty twenty-two. I think that actually meant to say twenty twenty-three. So right now, before I go into the, the second point, we're working on getting that information so that we can provide it, not only on our website, but actually, um, in hand if somebody comes in and is asking questions.
Flyers at the front desk.
Yeah, and it's not that we're creating the flyers, it's that we're, we're already regurgitating the information, it's already out there. It's just a matter of being another resource, um, in which to gain that, um, that information and knowledge. And then two talks about housing choices in high-opportunity areas as part of the general plan update, and the Ojai Mespecode amend in amendment by the end of twenty twenty-three. Uh, and then expand housing opportunities in additional areas by designating new sites as SPL overlay. So the high-opportunity areas is part of the general plan. We're working through what those areas, um, look like at the moment, and then you'll be seeing some of that, um, into the future.
So did you find what a high-opportunity area is?
Um, not, not right now.
About specific examples?
Uh, high-opportunity areas tend to be the more affordable areas, the areas in which there's lower or perceived to be lower income. Um, environmental justice is another term that comes to mind as a part of that opportunity, those opportunity areas. So it tends to be the areas where, um, you tend to see lower income qualifying.
And then, um, this last part, designating new sites as, as SPL overlay, do we, I know we currently have our SPL, are we looking to expand that?
If the opportunities arise, we consider.
We did have, we did have one party come forward and inquire about putting an SPL overlay on a piece of property.
Yeah, I've heard a few.
I don't think it's happened.
Yeah, I've heard a few of those, yeah.
But.
Well, no, if it, if it was proposed, officially proposed, it would be coming before this body first.
Right.
Okay.
So it was just discussed, but it wasn't officially proposed.
Yes. And if I recall correctly, this, excuse me, this body discussed it. Unfortunately, the applicant or the person that was here assumed that it was approved by simply coming to this body, and they said, no, now the process begins for you. You have a nod to start the process, that's what you're asking for. Um, I'm not giving specific examples, I'm just saying that happened in the last nine months.
Feel free to come forward with a, with a formal request, the proposal.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Any additional questions for the moment? This is a very useful chart.
Yeah, this is awesome, thank you.
Yes, and we'll continue going back to this. Look, I have, I can't take full credit for it, I mean, I helped to, to craft it, but Alex, who was here before, really was the one that gets the credit for it. Um, moving forward on this, I think the next, uh, the next topic that we're gonna have for this is on the action orders, the number one, we'll go through, um, those. And just so this full body is aware, I'll be meeting with the subcommittee, um, to talk through each of those, and then kind of prioritize which ones moving forward. Remember, it just says in overview, ongoing is stuff that we're constantly, um, addressing, modifying, you know, making small tweaks to. The ones are gonna be the near-term stuff in the next eighteen months, the twos are stuff that's more in the two-to-three-year range, the threes are ones we're trying to get done before the end of the cycle. If we don't, you know, fingers crossed that HCD doesn't slap our hand for, for whatever reasons, but, um, some of these are bigger tasks, right?
Okay. I notice in the agenda, it says that your recommendation is that we receive a report, which we've just done, that we receive public comment on the matter. Anyone here present wish to comment on the housing element programs? Or Sherry, anyone with a raised hand?
No, there's not.
I only see one in the audience, virtual audience, I mean.
Oh. We know who that is.
All right, thank you very much, this is most illuminating. Let's move on then to item six, future agenda items.
All right, so. Oh, man, okay, so what we have going on for, sorry, didn't mean to do that.
Heavy sigh, heavy sigh.
Um, on November first, and on November fifteenth, we have the Cabrillo project, um, coming forward. The idea with this is having it as a discussion on the first, and then as a, uh, consideration for decision on the fifteenth.
Okay, I, I need to, uh, let you know at this point that November fifteenth, I will be out of town.
Okay, so that's a problem. Let's see.
You'll still have two residents and one non-resident.
Yes, we are still okay. Okay, we are still okay.
You'll have a legal quorum here.
No one else is leaving on the fifteenth? Okay. All right.
It's getting dangerously thin.
So knowing that you will not be here, uh, Chair.
No?
You're next, you will, you will be up, yes. You will be the standing chair.
Oh, boy, okay. You will be concert master on the fifteenth.
Concert master.
And just so you know, I'm not scheduling any other items unless Maura tells me that there is an item that has to go forward as a part of our permit, you know, the Permit Streamlining Act, um, for a public project.
Okay.
Or for a, not a public project, but for a, a public hearing item.
I will be in Tennessee.
On the Cabrillo project? Is that a presentation? Do we, will we be expected to respond to that with our questions, or push this group in any particular way?
So, you need to be a sponge. We were a sponge for the housing laws?
Yes, we will be a sponge.
You need to be a sponge here and be prepared. Now, I will tell you, for the November first, I'm throwing a lot of information out there, and there's gonna be a lot of attachments that go along with it. I'm trying to get this to you a week in advance, um, so that you have a chance to digest, even potentially ask questions leaning into the meeting, right? So that you're, um, prepared. I can't make any guarantees, but I can just tell you that it's in draft form and we're, we're circulating, getting it to the final, um, version for, for this group. Fifteenth, though, is different, because I'll have a resolution, um, associated with it, and we'll be looking for a decision.
Okay. You're, you're keeping an up-to-date copy of Government Code six five eight five two? That seems to be where all this stuff is happening.
Yeah, uh, there's several government codes that actually apply to this, so. An up-to-date version of all those codes is, um, certainly in my inbox on a regular basis, so. Yeah, it's, um, it's gonna be interesting, to say the least. But I think it's gonna be educational, too. I mean, I'm learning a lot, even as, even as I've been writing, uh, the report, uh, it's been educational for me, too.
Yeah, considering all these new laws, and, well, these don't apply, the new laws don't apply to this, because they're not in effect yet, right?
It's the.
Some are, some aren't. Some are starting January first, but others, like, I, I found this twenty-two ninety-five that has to do with school districts.
Oh, yes.
That was actually, that took effect sometime in the past.
Yeah. That one's new to me, only because I'm not, I'm not tracking school district sites right now.
Yeah.
Current projects that are going on in this city, within our private boundaries, um, our public boundaries, for that matter, too. Yeah, so that's what we're, the month of November is going to be Cabrillo vistas.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so mark your calendars, sharpen your pencil.
When do we get to ask them questions?
On the first. You can actually ask them questions on both, the first and the fifteenth, and I encourage that. In fact, I more than encourage that, you should be bringing lots of questions.
Okay, 'cause I, you know, my idea of a sponge is different. Sit back and be quiet.
Yeah, a sponge in a different format. So two weeks ago, you were a sponge, because we're throwing just about every housing law and revision that's taking place, right? And we were doing it.
Asked a lot of questions.
Yeah, we did, that was good.
And it was, yeah, it was kind of a, as we went along, the questions came in, and then, you know, as the attorney was, felt comfortable, moved forward, right? This is gonna be a presentation, and likely as a presentation's going forward, um, if you have questions, you could certainly answer that at that time. And you should.
Okay.
Um, I'll just say this, the housing element program prioritization, um, that's the programs themselves, I'm gonna pause those for the month of November, just so everybody's aware. This project is taking up a lot of my time, um, at the moment, and I'm anticipating other housing projects that are going to be doing the same. So the month of November is really gonna be this project, to be fair. All right? Not forgetting about it, just pausing it for a month.
So unrelated question, has anybody from Ojai USD reached out to you?
No.
And, and for clarification, on the fifteenth, I can sign into the meeting, I just can't.
Is your microphone on?
Steve, is, is your microphone on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Uh, on the fifteenth, I can sign into the meeting and I can comment, but I cannot deliberate and vote because I am out of the district, not on district business.
Yeah, I'll let.
Right, by twenty-four forty-nine?
So, um.
That's the rule?
You can still teleconference in under the Regular Brown Act rules, but you'll need to post your, um, your location on the agenda, so it will need to be a public location if you want to teleconference in, um, under the Regular Brown Act.
I'll ponder that.
So you can, you can teleconference, it's, a lot of people do it from like a hotel lobby or Starbucks or something, but you also need to post the agenda at that place and, and have your location on the agenda, um, if you.
But that also goes for the ten-day prior noticing, has to carry that venue?
Um, no, just the, just the three-day agenda noticing.
So the, the public agenda, yeah, versus the notification. Notification doesn't include where the commissioners are at.
Yeah.
Got it.
Or how many commissioners are gonna be at the meeting?
If you decide you don't want to teleconference in and participate as a commissioner, you can participate as a member of the public on Zoom.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, so you were thinking about the last piece, which is what she was just mentioning, but there is an opportunity, it sounds like.
Yes.
I'd ask for further, I mean, not to question you, but, eh, we'll, we'll get, we'll get further clarification and get you an official response as well.
Along, along with my membership on the sanitary district board, we've been wrapped around the axle with three sixty-one and twenty-four forty-nine all year long, and I thought twenty-four forty-nine applied here.
I don't think so.
Because we are a Brown Act body.
Yes, you can, you can use twenty-four forty-nine, but you would need to meet those, um, just cause or emergency circumstance.
Right, right.
So you would need to show something like a sickness, or travel for agency business, something like that.
And that's, that doesn't apply?
Yeah.
But I could still do it under the old Brown Act provisions?
Yes, yeah.
As long as we notice the venue?
Mm-hmm, that's right.
Think about that one.
I didn't think that was an option.
Be better to have four deliberating and voting members, yeah.
Yes, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll do official follow-up, just to, just to confirm. We've already got, uh, I'm not doing anything illegal, I just.
What happened?
We still have a quorum, though, with three, um, two, two residing in the city, so we're still okay there. But we'll get you official word, and then you can ponder how you wanna move forward with that.
Very good, very good.
Um, in terms of pending projects.
Like December and January could get very busy, too.
I anticipate that one of these three, if not two of these three, will actually be, um, coming before this body in December, leaning into January. We typically, actually, we typically cancel the first meeting in January, um, and then depending on when the second meeting in December happens.
How close it is to New Year's and such, yeah.
Yeah, that's typically, anyway, we'll look at that, maybe by, by the beginning of December and figure that out.
Changing a sign, can that be a very big deal?
Um, I'll just give you the thirty seconds on that.
It's, it's the fireworks that come out of the top of the sign, hot air balloons and.
It's a part of our quirky, quirky process, monument signs of this nature are required.
We did this for the, well, we did this for a religious establishment on Grand Avenue.
On Grand, yes.
Yes, we did.
That one was interesting, it had slightly different parameters than this one did.
And it went through some iterations.
It did, it did, this body, I'll, I'll admit, I was not a big fan of it, but with those revisions, it got me on board, too, so.
It looks nice now.
Looks good. Okay. Then, um, how about a director's report? Anything else you wanna add? You've answered an awful lot of questions tonight already.
You could make this still a, a long meeting.
Shelley filibuster. No, I, here's the thing, uh, I, so this week, I'm, I had the opportunity to meet with the subcommittee, um, for housing, and I thought it was a great start to how we can address process, um, specifically regarding the housing element and those programs that exist. It's a, it's a daunting task just with a small staff. When you have a commission that's interested and engaged, it helps, um, with the process. Now, obviously, um, we are still looking at filling the advanced planner role, and I'm, I'm hopeful, because there's gotta be some applicants out there, and we've been looking at them even today, and I, there's, there's some that are promising, um, but I'll admit, there was one that was absolutely promising and then dropped out, so unfortunately, we lost that opportunity. Um, but, you know, resetting it and looking again, um, I'm, we're seeing some that are out there, so it's just a matter of getting them in, in the office, doing the interviews, and getting, seeing if they're the right fit, so. Even with that taking place, um, I still see this as an opportunity, um, for this commission to be a part of, of the housing element process and being engaged, so. That's all the update that I have, um, from the director's standpoint. I will say this also, there's a lot of interesting items that are gonna be coming forward to city council that are being led by community development departments, so stay tuned for those. You already know about the one that's interesting that's coming forward for this body.
Yeah, you're not busy enough, I can see.
My stress level has never been higher, but it is what it is, right?
Thank you for lunch, by the way, that was very nice.
Yes, well, you've all, you earned it, it was a working lunch, is really what that was. You guys had to roll up your sleeves as we talked it through. Um, okay, that's it from me.
Thank you very much. And then if we could hear from our city council liaison?
Thank you very much, and it's only ten till eight, I feel like we're just warming up.
Compared to yours.
Yeah, you all are amazing, um, so I just would like to thank you all for such thoughtful and thorough and respectful discussion, it's really great to hear, and, um, the details that you all dive into with such gusto is, um, it's a really beautiful thing to see, um, great questions, Commissioner Trent, appreciate that, great insights, Commissioner Murphy, thank you, Chair Quilisi, for speaking for the trees, much appreciated, you're like the Lorax. And Commissioner Bennett, thank you also for encouraging, um, property owners to be generous, because we can be, and, um, I have a junior ADU, I, I rented for twelve hundred dollars, and it's really been a great experience to provide homes for teachers and pet sitters and social workers and a forest service, um, worker, and it's just, it's a really symbiotic relationship, so thank you for encouraging that. Thank you, staff, I really appreciate you for all the details, and it's also a wonderful thing to hear applicants saying how much they appreciate working with you and Maura, and how easy it was and interactive process it was, um, so that's really wonderful to hear, and looking forward to November, curious sponges, right? Is that the theme? Uh, to really dive deep and ask all those great questions, so, um, much appreciated. And thank you, Lucas, for the, the update on the housing action plan program and, um, the general plan. I always think of James Vega saying that he was told repeatedly that it could never be done in Ojai, so thank you for picking up, carrying the torch forward, because it can be done, and you're doing it, and staff is doing it, so thank you for all your help on that, and, um, and it's also wonderful to hear about, that there have been inquiries, uh, several inquiries about the tenant protection and rent stabilization, because I think that's also something wonderful that we can do to support people in our community who really need help, so, thank you all, I'm really grateful, and, uh, we're ending before eight o'clock, so I'm gonna stop talking, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And I, I look at Lucas over there, and from the tabletop up, he looks very calm, reminds me of the ducks out on the lake. Quiet above the water, underneath, man, they're paddling away, and I think that's what we have here, but thank you, thank you for all the work. Okay, there being no other obvious business before the commission, at eight fifty-two, or se- excuse me, seven fifty-two, we are adjourned.